All right, let the record reflect. We've reconvened from our executive session with all members present virtually, and we've all come back from our 7:00 PM shout out to our frontline workers. And again, I want to thank all those working so hard to serve us during the pandemic. And tonight, the horn at Hartley Dodge was sounded by Tom Solaki, who is the Chair of our Parks Committee along with his children. And they did a great job. And if you happen to be driving by Hartley Dodge tonight, you'll see the lights out in the plaza are lit up in blue for our frontline workers. And it will be done every Monday that way. We have started a tradition of doing our shout outs before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Before each of our, at each of our meetings now. So I have two. One, I want to thank Carmella for her signs of inspiration that she helped spread around. That's really a good reminder that we are all in this together. And I want to recognize an anonymous donor who has pledged $100,000 to help feed the vulnerable families in Madison. With a food distribution through the Boxcar Program, upwards of 100 families will now be receiving food every week so that they do not go to bed hungry. It's just another great story of how people step forward in Madison. Carmel, Council President Vitale, you want to share your shout out?
Yeah, I thank you very much, Mayor. It's a pleasure that I give my shout out tonight to Diane Festigi. Diane has been a nurse at the Madison High School since around 2010. I've known Diane for a very long time. But the first time I worked with her more than a few years back is when I was liaison to the Board of Health. And part of my responsibility was liaison to MASA. We were looking for a few really good people for that committee. And of course, our thought was, let's ask Diane. She was a great choice. And because she is always willing to take on a project, especially if it helps Madison students and their families. For a very long time, she worked with Pomtonian, who provides lunch to children in a federally funded lunch program, and continued to work with them to make sure it was properly administered while the schools were closed. To ensure that the children were properly fed, not only from Monday to Friday, but the weekends as well. The mayor and the council administration, along with the Board of Education, developed the food project and asked Lisa Ellis, another superior volunteer, who automatically reached out to Diane to help. She rallied school nurses and staff members who reached out to the families in the lunch program. And last Wednesday, 70 families had the opportunity to receive boxes of food, which were donated anonymously and administered by Boxcar and Gargula Produce Company. This coming week, 86 total families will be receiving food again, donated and supplied by, donated again anonymously, and supplied by Boxcar and Gargula Produce. If you ask Lisa Ellis about Diane, and I quote, "I reached out to Diane because if you want something done right, you just reach out to Diane." So thank you Diane for your service to the students and the families that you care about so very much. We appreciate all of your work. Thank you, Mayor.
Hospital.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give a shout out to Mary Carson, a Madison resident, who is the owner of Jan Pro of Northern New Jersey. Jan Pro is a commercial cleaning company with professional-grade cleaning products and cutting-edge technologies to clean the workplace. She donated sanitation services to all of our police, fire, and EMS safety equipment and vehicles. And so we can continue to serve and protect the residents of Madison. The equipment she, our equipment that we use frequently during this crisis has now received a thorough cleaning, and it is most appreciated by all of us here in Madison. So thank you to Mary Carson.
Okay, Maureen.
Thank you, Mayor. There are many unsung heroes in the COVID-19 war. First responders, doctors, nurses, police and fire, all put themselves on the front line every day to make sure we are safe and protected from the COVID-19 epidemics. To this group, I would like to add funeral directors like Madison Memorial Home and Borough's Core and Dangler. They're as much on the front line dealing with families in a time of quarantine and social distancing, when the traditional ways of remembering and honoring the passing of loved ones is no longer possible. These funeral homes are working to make sure that families have a time to grieve and say goodbye to loved ones while making sure that no one is exposed to the virus. We give our thanks to all who step up in these difficult times to help us deal with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor. The second line of defense against the spread of COVID-19, in addition to social distancing, is wearing facial masks. Of the many people involved in creating and distributing masks, one outstanding person is Christine Preston. Christine joined a colleague to share frontline sewing angels on her community pages. In less than a week, over 150 volunteers were enlisted to sew masks, cut fabric, and donate supplies of all kinds. It has become so popular that it has spread to Bernardsville, Bernardsville, excuse me, Woodland Park, Maristown, and Harding Township. Since March 21st, the Sewing Angels have made more than 10,000 masks and 5,000 scrub caps that have been distributed to more than 40 New Jersey and New York area hospitals, medical facilities, nursing homes, and assisted living facilities. We'd also like to thank Enid Smith-Helk for her extraordinary dedication and hard work. So thank everybody who makes masks. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
My shout out tonight is to Eric Grange, President of the Board of Health. He has served seven years on the Board of Health, and this is his third year as President. In addition to his normal duties, throughout this COVID-19 crisis, he has essentially become a full-time volunteer, jumping in wherever he's needed, whether it's answering phones, working directly with the health officer on communications to the public, or ensuring that communication flows to the borough by working through myself as the Board of Health Liaison, but also directly with the mayor Ray Cody and Jim Burnett. So a huge shout out for Eric for his continued work on the Board of Health and helping guide us through this COVID-19 crisis.
And Rachel.
Thank you, Mayor. Clearly, our Madison community has been called to action during this pandemic. This week, I'd like to express my appreciation for a month-old organization known as Weekend Meals for Madison Students in Need, organized by Madison residents and volunteers Alex Jennings and Barbara Hughes. Together with Madison residents, they have raised funds to donate a $25 Stop and Shop gift card each week to the family of each of Madison's 60 or so students who are receiving free and reduced-cost lunches. As Council President Vitale mentioned, our public school administration and Pomtonian have worked together to continue to provide lunches for those students while schools have been closed for remote instruction. But with this additional volunteer effort, each family receiving lunch can also pick up one grocery gift card per child on Fridays. So far, Weekend Meals has raised over $21,000 from over 200 people and have distributed 357 grocery gift cards. The cards are packed each week with small treats such as Easter candy, Girl Scout cookies, and other snacks for the kids. And the number of cards distributed has grown each week as more families benefit from the program. The district has announced that anyone in need of a child's lunch can come pick one up. So if you would like to help these families whose privacy is respected at all times, please donate to Weekend Meals for Madison Students in Need on GoFundMe. And thank you to Alex, Barbara, and to everyone who has contributed to helping our Madison community stay strong.
And now to honor our unsung heroes and recognize our great country, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. And before we move on to minutes, I want to have a few people to remember. Had a moment of silence. First, Richard Holden passed away at the age of 70 on April 15th, 2020, after a long illness. Rich leaves behind his wife of 32 years, Mayor Mariana Holden, known worldwide for his contributions to the field of journalism, in particular, his efforts to bring in, bring diversity to the newsroom long before diversity became a buzzword. Born in St. Louis, Missouri, he was an avid sports fan, also as a related to St. Louis teams, though he did grow to enjoy the Mets and Yankees after nearly 40 years in this area. He was also a big supporter of, and a season ticket holder to the Army West Point football. After he graduated from University of Missouri with a bachelor and master's degrees in journalism, Rich spent his entire 41 career with Dow Jones and Company, publishes The Wall Street Journal, beginning in '73, on the National News Copy Desk. Rich served our country in the US Air Force during the Vietnam War, retired in 1988 as captain in the Air Force Reserves. He continued his public service as a member of the Madison Republican Committee, American Legion Post 43, trustee of the Madison Public Library, member and past member of the, past president of the Madison Historical Society, member of the Madison Patriotic Celebrations Committee, and the Memorial Day Parade Chairman. An avid golfer, he was also a member of the Madison Golf Club. In his work with the Historical Society for many years, Rich wrote the 50 years ago column in the, for Madison History, The Madison Eagle. Another Madisonian, longtime Madisonian, we lost in the last two weeks, Margie Anne Ryan of 94 years old, passed away in Concord, Massachusetts of natural causes on April 21st. Margie was born in Iowa as the eldest of 10 children. She was predeceased by her husband, Robert. She and Robert could be seen at every Madison Memorial and Veterans Day reception. She's survived by her four children as well as 10 grandchildren. After finishing school, she took a job as a teller in Casper, Wyoming, where she met her future husband at a church dance. They married in '53, settled in the Midwest. And then after traveling the country for a while, they ended up in Madison in 1959, where Robert had grown up. So they've lived here for 60 years. And the Ryan clan is well-known in Madison for generations. And after raising her children, she began to volunteer at Great Swamp Outdoor Education Center, later took paid positions in Morris County Museum and Outdoor Education Center. And a personal story about Margie Ryan is she taught me that chicken had white meat and dark meat. You know, my first childhood sleepover was at the Ryan's house with my friend Rob. And coming from a big family, I always just picked the biggest piece of chicken that was left on the platter. And so I was a little confused when she asked if I wanted white meat or dark meat. So a great memory of Margie Ryan. Roseanne Esposito, a lifelong Madison resident, died peacefully on March, or on April 20th. She was 87 years old. She was born in Madison and on November 27th, 1932, to the late Anthony and Marie Palmer. She was raised in Madison, the youngest of four children. Rose met her beloved husband, the late Anthony Esposito, when she returned, when he returned from service in the US Army. The couple married and remained in Madison to raise her beautiful family. Rose had a career with the assembly line worker for the H.P. Higgs Company, right here in Madison. Rose was a very giving woman, who always looked out for others. She enjoyed knitting and crocheting and made many bonnets that she would donate to babies in the hospital. She was predeceased by her husband of 65 years, Anthony. And this is one of the classic Madison nicknames. Anthony Woke-Up Esposito, and passed away in 2018. She's survived by her son Dominic and three cherished grandchildren. Pat Lepri, longtime resident of Madison, died on April 17th. His wife Lucy died on April 9th. They had been married for 60 years. Pat was born in Newark, and then March of... Sorry. If what happened, you put your notes on the keyboard. I apologize. Upon his honorable discharge from the Navy, Pat enrolled in the Seton Hall University, where he earned his bachelor's degree. And through family friends, he met his wife. They settled here in Madison, where they raised her family and lived ever since. They are survived by a daughter, Anne, and a son, Michael. And then Maria Gloria Sapiro died on April 16th, 2020, at the age of 90. Marie was born July of 2019, 29, lifelong Madison resident. Married her beloved husband Nick on September 27th, 1952. They lived across the street from each other on Park Avenue. The couple settled in Madison, where they raised their family and have lived ever since. Marie had, with her deep faith in God, was a parishioner at St. Vincent's Madison for her entire life. She was the assistant tax collector with the Borough of Florham Park for many years. She's survived by her husband Nick. Three daughters, in addition, survived by eight grandchildren. And then James DeCaro, lifelong Madison, longtime Madison resident, died on April 23rd. He was 81. He was born in Italy, March of '39. He was the oldest of six children, emigrated to the United States in February of 1956 with his father. They lived at Park Avenue. And James began his training as electrician after high school. He was very talented, with highly respect in his field, long career with Union Carbide in Morris Township, and then Stark Electric in Maristown. He met his wife Lucia on a circle line cruise in York City. The couple were married in July of 1960, settled on Cook Avenue, and then moved on to Burnett Road, where they raised their family. He is survived by his wife, five children, James Alphonse, Madison Police Officer Carmine, Antoinette, and Lucille, and 12 grandchildren. Let us take a moment to remember Rich Holden, Margie Ryan, Roseanne Esposito, Pasquale and Lucy Lepri, Marie Sapiro, and James DeCaro. Our thoughts are with Mayor Holden and Madison Police Officer Carmine DeCaro. And all families have lost loved ones over the past two weeks. Thank you. Can I have a motion for the executive minutes of March 30th, 2020?
So moved. Second.
These have already been discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of March 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
One minor correction. The meeting called to order at 6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM. So Liz, if you can note that. Any other discussion, corrections? All in favor? All right. Welcome all to another virtual meeting. I'm going to be, since, lot to cover. I'm going to be short with my comments, but I do have a couple of proclamations to do. I just want to remind the public the importance of taking care of your census if you haven't gone online to take care of that yet. Because it's in this crazy world right now. It is easy to forget about the census, and it must all be counted. Keep in mind, right now, Morris County's population is basically $491,000. Money was distributed in the first COVID-19 relief package to counties of at least 500,000 people. So just think, if we have an undercount of 9,000, putting us below that threshold, lots of federal dollars support that our county could use could be left on the table. So please, if you have not done so, go online and take care of the census registration. And remember, it is confidential. It cannot be shared with any other department in federal government or state government. Just the total counts, none of the personal information. Okay. And so we have a couple of proclamations to do. Arbor Day. Hello, Nancy. Welcome.
Mayor.
Hello, Jean. Good to see you. Now, this is a proclamation that we typically do on our Arbor Day celebration, which would be part of May Day, that would be normally this coming Saturday. And obviously, that is not happening. We will be announcing a new date for May Day. It could be June Day, or it could be a, kind of a do-it-yourself days announced. But we certainly do not want to forget the importance of Arbor Day. So let me present this proclamation to Nancy and Jean. Whereas in 1872, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion and precious topsoil by wind and, by cutting, wind and, can reduce the erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, by cutting and cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, and produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city improve property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas through the efforts of the Shade Tree Management Board and the Friends of Madison Shade Tree Incorporated, the Borough of Madison has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 35 consecutive years, and has received its 13th Tree City USA Growth Award in recognition of environmental improvements and achievement of higher levels of tree care. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim Saturday, May 2nd, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support the efforts to care for our trees and woodlands. And I further encourage all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of present, of present and future generations. And now through a special part of Zoom that you can do, I'm going to hand off this proclamation.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is. It appeared. Okay, it took a while to appear, Jean. Okay, Jean and Nancy, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for taking, taking the time to acknowledge trees in this really terrible time. Jean?
Yeah. I'd like to just observe that a lot more people are walking and riding bikes this time, and that hopefully, they're observing the trees, leafing out, and appreciate the trees that are up there. I also just give you a two-minute update for the tree protection ordinance. Basically, Rich Wolowitz is in place. We've had a total of six people request permits. Those permits have been processed, and a total of eight trees have been removed under the permit process, and two trees will be replaced. In addition, there's been four instances, four situations where trees have been removed without permits, and let us have been sent to those residents such that they should be applying a permit after the fact. So the bottom line is, I think the tree protection ordinance is processing, and on this Arbor Day celebration, hopefully, we're doing more and more to protect our trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean and Nancy. Again, thank you for all your work and dedication, and looking forward to next year presenting this proclamation on the front steps of Hartley Dodge.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be pulling up another proclamation in just a second. Where's Marlene? Welcome. All right. This proclamation is, we do this every year, but it is extra special to present this proclamation this year. This is for National Nurses Week, May 6th through May 12th. Whereas the health and well-being of people are the biggest priorities of our community. And whereas in the Borough of Madison, nurses are an integral part of our healthcare system, serving residents of all ages with skill, knowledge, caring, and commitment. And whereas nurses have a unique perspective and broad understanding of the concepts of good health. And whereas, May 6th through 12th, 2020, has been designated National Nurses Week to acknowledge and promote the contributions of nurses in our community. And whereas, the Borough of Madison Public Health Nurse Supervisor, Marlene Dolan, BSN, has been dedicated to the well-being of Madison residents since 1994, and has been competently assisted by Jean Nash, and in recent weeks, by Board of Education nurses Colette Krekis, Diane Festigi, Jerry Moran, and Jackie Young. And whereas, the commitment and tireless efforts of these nurses as they manage many health issues associated with COVID-19 pandemic crisis have been exemplary. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby reckon, recognize the week of May 6th through 12th, 2020, as National Nurses Week, and encourage residents of Madison to acknowledge the many services provided by nurses and tremendous contribution they make to the health of our residents and well-being of our community every day. Marlene, thank you so much for what you are doing. And here is your proclamation.
And look what I have.
Look at that.
Thank you so much. It worked. Very long arms.
Yep.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Conley, and all the council members and the administration for recognizing National Nurse Week. And not only the nurses that were mentioned in the proclamation, but I salute all of them, all the nurses that have gotten us to this point and have, that I've had the pleasure to work with before, and those that will continue and lead the profession ahead. Nurses, I just, I just have a few little, short little words. Nurses are thinkers and doers. And during this current crisis, I feel many have carried the emotional burden of COVID-19 for so many of their patients and their families. I salute them, and my sincere appreciation and utmost respect goes to them. They are the true heroes. For us in public health, the more behind-the-scenes with our work with COVID, it goes on on a daily basis with patients and families. And I am grateful for the opportunity to be Madison's public health nurse. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you're doing. This is, you are amazing. And here you are, at the end, and at the end of another long day, still smiling. So Marlene, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We have one more proclamation that just suddenly appeared on my desk. And this, oh, Municipal Clerks Week. Let me try that again. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the official professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and the agencies of governments of all other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Municipal Clerk serves as the information center and on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings, their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Municipal Clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne, Kathleen Lotine, and Mary Facarello. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize the week of May 3rd through May 9th as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend the appreciation to our Municipal Clerk, Elizabeth Osborne, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services that they perform and exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Liz, thank you for everything you do on behalf of the borough. So here you go. Oh, look at that.
It works. Oh, I thank you all for this recognition. And as always, it's an honor to serve the Borough of Madison.
And flowers, sir.
Thank you again.
Thank you for the assistance there, Doug. All right. And now we move on to reports from committees. Finance and Borough Clerk, Council President Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank all of the finance staff, including utility billing, tax collection, accounts payable, purchasing and payroll for doing such a great job during these difficult times. They've been working split shifts, one week at home and the other week at Borough Hall in order to minimize infection and make sure the borough continues to provide vital services. It's not easy for these people and this staff to work at home, but they still perform the important behind-the-scenes work. I want to thank all of them for what they're doing. From the tax collector, property owners are reminded that the second quarter taxes are due this Friday, May 1st. Our first, our new tax assessor, Jackie Cardimi, started her first day on the job this past Friday. She will be in the office every other Friday until staff work split shifts. Once we get back to full staffing, she will be in the office every Friday. From the utility billing department, we're finalizing the details and expect to switch over to a new utility billing software in about three weeks. The old system is tentatively scheduled to be shut down on Monday, May 11th and the new system will go online a few days later. It will be a tremendous upgrade. Updates and other information will be available on RoseNet. Take a good look at it. I think that you'll love these upgrades. Finally, I want to talk about the budget hearing this evening. We introduced the budget way back on March 30th and by state law, we have to wait at least 28 days before we have a hearing. We have this 28-day waiting period because the state wants to make sure the public has an opportunity to review and comment on the budget. In short, the 28-day waiting period is for transparency. We on council take the budget and transparency very seriously. All the council discussions are recorded and are available to view whenever you want and all the reports and schedules that are presented to the council are available on RoseNet. Since December of last year, we've had 10 meetings where we talked publicly about this budget. We'll be talking more about the budget after the hearing, but I wanted to make sure that everyone understood how transparent and open this process has been. So thank you very much. I also want to make a big salute out to the mayor, administration, Ray Cody and our CFO, Jim Burnett. They've done a wonderful job and I'll make my few remarks later on about the budget and what has gone on in the last couple of months, but a very, very special thank you to them. While we were, while we were working on the budget, they still kept on going and made sure that everything in the town was running superbly. So thank you very much to you guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Public safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department, during the past month, the Police Department responded to 1,334 calls for service, including, that included 61 medical emergencies. Madison police officers are working hard to maintain our safe community and ask that Madison's do their part and keep vigilant with social distancing protocols and also be careful in the streets. We noticed they're noticing people are walking in the streets to do the social distancing, but there are cars on the road. So please be careful. We are all in this together and will be a stronger community when this is over and the Police Department thank our town administration and residents for their support. And then from the Fire Department, our career firefighters as well as our volunteer firefighters are working on a modified schedule, practicing social distancing and continuing to serve the Madison residents. Our career firefighters who are EMS-trained support our ambulance corps along with Morris County EMS and to make sure that at least one staffed ambulance is available 24/7. And again, the Fire Department would like to thank all Madison residents and local businesses for their show of support for all first responders by their generous donation of food and PPE. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Department of Public Works, work on the Dodge Field Playground Field House began last week. DPW demolished the existing structure, saving the borough $20,000 and was able to recycle the concrete. DPW continues to maintain the athletic field, seating and mowing. The lack of athletic programs has allowed the fields to have a rest, which will help when the fields are reopened and in use later this year. Downtown benches will be put out once the quarantine and social distancing are no longer in effect. The downtown flower baskets have been ordered and will be put up once the chance of freeze is passed, traditionally Mother's Day. And finally, DPW will be resuming regular operations on Wednesday. From the engineering, milling and overlay of the King's Road and Prospect Avenue parking lots commenced today with the intention of completing them by the end of the week. Resurfacing work this month will include Cedar, DeHart, Walnut and Alexander. We will appropriate the funds from capital tonight and then get reimbursed by PSENG. This will allow us to do the work during the summer months when school is not in session. It will also allow for curb-to-curb payment, paving rather. The contractor for the Dodge Field Playground Field House indicated that building permits would be submitted this week and footing foundation work begin by May 18th. The duration of the contract is 90 days. Paving was completed on the new recycling center at DPW last week. The center should be operational and open to the public in the next week or so. And finally, video conferencing tools were used to hold a public meeting of the planning board on April 21st. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the Senior Shopping Network launched on March 23rd, it has 130 volunteers and it's completed 200 shopping trips for about 120 families. From the Director of Business Development, Downtown Development Commission report, the Madison, New Jersey Small Business Recovery Grant Program has been created by the Madison Main Street Foundation and Downtown Development Commission with the support of the Madison Area Chamber of Commerce to mitigate the severe economic damage caused by the global COVID-19 pandemic to our beloved local business community. A GoFundMe campaign titled Help the Madison, New Jersey Small Business Community Recover is live now, has been for a while. The goal is to raise a minimum of $200,000. The Madison Main Street Foundation, a registered 501(c)(3), will match the first $50,000 on a one-to-one basis. We need your support. All contributions are tax deductible. For those who would prefer to pay by check, you can send it to the Madison Main Street Foundation at 50 King's Road. Thus far, donations have totaled $49,454 from 234 donations. Grant applications have been available online since April 1st and must be submitted by 11:59 PM on April 30th. Currently, MACA, Madison Area Cultural Alliance and the Community Arts Center are working with a web designer on a new website. In light of COVID-19, they are pivoting to develop a strategy to eventually incorporate the website with live streaming from the art center. The idea is to make the, is to make use of the art center while it is closed to the public. Streaming of concerts and events is all there and is currently and will likely stay here long after the pandemic. From the Recreation Advisory Committee, on a sad note, the softball season has been canceled in Madison. Lacrosse and soccer schedules are being assessed by their respective boards. Anticipated use of fees for the spring schedule will not be collected. The Recreation Department, due to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, all recreation activities remain suspended until further notice. The situation will continue to be monitored. Officials will be published on program status as soon as new information becomes available. Spring seating, aeration and split seating of the playing fields at Del Barton Park, Niles Park, Bailey Eller Dodge Field and the Rosedale Baseball Complex, the Rosedale Soccer Field and the Lucy D. Anthony Baseball Complex has been officially scheduled for April 28th and 29th. The first draft of the fall schedule has been generated and will be finalized in the coming weeks to ensure that we are fully prepared to resume activities as soon as conditions allow. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And health, Ms. Cohen.
Once again, let's start off with some good news. It appears statewide and especially in the northern counties that our curve has begun to flatten and is beginning to even slightly downward. This is good news as Governor and State Commissioner of Health announced today the framework for easing the state border in the future. One of the timeframe was chair and current rules will be in place for the future and important indicator that. That we are ready for adjustments, setting the sustained downward COVID-19 questions.
Hold a second. You may need to call in like you did last time. Yep, we're, it looks like bandwidth issue. So we'll go to utilities with Ms. Arlick and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. For the utilities report, due to storms over the last two weeks, the electric utility responded to nurse calls for downed wires, a tree and branches on primary lines, as well as a brief outage that resulted in loss of power for less than an hour to about 150 residents. The department has also been preparing the municipal parking lot on King's Road between Maple Avenue and Prospect Street for the new electric vehicle charging station. The work has included replacing or relocating poles, prepping to connect the charging station pad, reconnecting the parking lot lighting and upgrading the wire size from Maple Avenue to accommodate the charging load. In addition, the electric department has installed underground service to a new home, repaired non-functioning post light on Main Street and assisted the meter department in changing all of the electric meters in the Plaza condo development to new smart meters. The Water Department reports that they continue to work in split shifts. Water shut-offs for repairs, meter changes and utility markouts are a constant reminder to our Water Department that it is still business as usual for our utilities. In between scheduled maintenance and water sampling of the wells and distribution system, the Water Department also assisted the Engineering Department with the demolition of the Dodge Field Playground in preparation for the construction of the new facility. That's all for utilities.
Thank you. Do we have Deb back?
All right, take two.
There you go. Sound much better.
All right, I'll just call in for the future from my phone. Just a reminder, the Health Department offices at Walnut Street remain open from 8:00 to 4:30 Monday through Friday to provide both general information and answer any COVID-19 questions from our residents and businesses. We encourage calling ahead as most businesses and conversations can be conducted via phone or email. The staff at the Health Department continues to focus their efforts on contact tracing and investigation of new COVID-19 cases. As you are no doubt aware, long-term care facilities are a big concern during this pandemic. Hungry get living combined with age and general health of residents have made these facilities particularly hard hit. Since the beginning of the public health emergency, Marlene Dolan, our Public Health Nurse, has worked closely with the staff at our long-term care facilities to ensure they have appropriate procedures, supplies and staff to care for their residents. In addition to steps being taken by the State Health Department, our Health Officer Mike Fitzpatrick made unannounced visits to our long-term care facilities last week. Changing gears quickly, two weeks ago, the Governor announced a requirement for the public to wear face coverings while shopping at an essential business such as a grocery store, pharmacy, post office, et cetera, while picking up takeout at a restaurant and while riding New Jersey Transit. If you choose to use a disposable mask and/or are using gloves when shopping, please dispose of them properly in a trash can. Even during the public health emergency, we should not be littering or expecting employees at businesses to discard our masks and gloves. A few final reminders, Morris County continues to operate a public COVID-19 testing site, which is available to Madison residents free of charge. This site is at the County College of Morrison Randolph. For more information and to make an appointment, visit health.morriscounty nj.gov/covidtesting. Other private healthcare providers in our area such as Summit Medical Group and Atlantic Health also have testing available. Please visit their websites for detailed availability and restrictions or consult with your own healthcare provider. Finally, some important reminders from the Health Department that echo what we have heard time and time again while this public health emergency has been impacting our lives. Remain at home whenever you can. When you do go out for essential needs, practice social distancing, that is keep at least six feet from people outside your household as much as is practical. When inside essential businesses wear a face covering, wash your hands often with soap and water. When soap isn't available, use hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol. Refrain from touching your face. If you feel unwell, stay home. Further isolate yourself from other members of your household and contact your doctor. In the event of a true medical emergency, call 911. While you are physically distant from your friends and extended family, stay connected and check on those around you via phone, video chat or text. This is especially true for those you know living alone or who may be elderly. Continue to enjoy the outdoors and fresh air when you can. Remember that all state and county parks and trails are now closed by order of the Governor. Madison parks remain open for passive recreation, but social distancing remains important. While walking, jogging or biking in your neighborhood, follow the rules of the road, but also maintain social distancing even well beyond six feet if you can. If an area or your neighborhood streets look particularly busy with those exercising, consider waiting for another time or choosing another location. Parents, continue to set a good example for our younger generation on social distancing and explain to your children the importance of it when they might be otherwise not at home. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Again, very important information. We are now moving on to our budget hearing and I will be opening the hearing in just a second. I'm going to go through these guidelines right now. Again, this is, we're going to have three opportunities for comments today and this is the first of three. This is only on the budget and you'll be given the chance to ask questions and make comments on the budget. We will, if you have questions, we will capture those questions and then try to answer them as we have our discussion. If you are online, you will be, you can raise your hand by clicking the hand. If you're on the phone, you can be recognized by hitting the star nine. Note that for security reasons, we cannot recognize anyone listed as anonymous or a call without a phone number identified. When you are recognized unmuted, this is very important, you must start off immediately with your name and address before starting any comments. Failure to do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. Try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but as we always do, we'll give you a one-minute grace period, but you will be stopped at four minutes. So anyone wishing to, I opened the hearing for anyone wishing to comment or ask questions on the budget.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Pat Rowe from 25 Pine Avenue, Madison, New Jersey. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Just wanted to be short. So I'm not going to belabor this because I've already commented probably over the 10 meetings that you've had, half of them. But there were a couple of things I did want to continue to press. One is I am still disappointed that you're going ahead with passing the budget tonight. I really feel having some time to understand what's going on with the finances in the community and see what the actual tax collections look like for the month of May before you set a final budget is something I would have done or pressed for. The other thing is certainly back to the last meeting, I did mention that I thought it would be a good idea to consider lowering or eliminating the open space tax for 2020. And I believe you mentioned that that was a one-time thing that was only allowed because the borough was going through a, had gone through a reevaluation in 2013. So I actually went back and watched the meeting in 2013 where it was discussed and the Borough Attorney, Mr. Jacoby, opined about the borough's ability to change the open space tax. And at the time, he said, there were only three conditions that had to be met. The first was it needed to be done via ordinance, which you would expect. The second was that you could make it any amount you wanted as long as it didn't exceed the amount that was authorized by the community back in 2003, which obviously lowering it would not be a problem. The third was it needed to be done essentially at the time the budget was being done because it needed to be filed with the county, the state or whomever in order to be on the tax bills. It couldn't be just on mid-year. So I continue to ask you guys to take a look at that and ask the Borough Attorney if there's been any updates to their thoughts from seven years ago. And the final thing was on that also, I know Mr. Burnett said that he wasn't a favor of that because of the fact that there was debt service that needed to be paid. But as I pointed out multiple times, the borough has, I think, over $700,000 in grants that can only be used to cover the debt service. So this year's debt service is not in danger nor would even next year's be. So again, in addition to all the other things I've commented on and I was hoping the council would take into account as it is a budget this year, I'd still hope they would consider those and specifically open space because I believe it can still be done after tonight's meeting, but before the final tax bills are set. So thank you very much for hearing me over the last several months and have a good evening.
Thank you, Pat, and always a pleasure to hear from you. Seeing no one else, I close the hearing. I I, resolution 125, resolution of the Borough of Madison finally adopting a 20, a 2020 budget and tax resolution. Carmel, you're muted.
Oh, I'm muted. Okay, now you're all right now?
Now you're good.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, I move resolution 125 dash 2020.
I second.
And, uh, Jim or Carmel, you want to, um, start with the comments as the, um, chair to finance and then Jim will have a presentation, then we will, um, hear from our auditor and, um, then full council discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a few comments. I, I started off during my report to say thank you, uh, to, um, administration and CFO and the mayor and whatever. It takes a lot of people, uh, involved in creating the budget. That includes administration, finance, along with every department head and all the council members. I want to especially thank my finance backup, Councilwoman Maureen Byrne and Councilwoman Ostry Bailey for all her support and guidance in these last couple of months. It was a big project and we all worked hard on it for the last five months. The budget is important. It, it is, as far as I'm concerned, the most important, the most, probably the most important vote that we, uh, make all year as council members. We had a lot of discussions and we didn't always agree. We had a good budget in late February, then the world changed with the pandemic. We worked hard to reduce the property tax increase from 2% to 1% and we added money in the budget to make sure that we can take care of our residents during this crisis. We worked together and we compromised. This, this is a calendar year budget that runs from January to December. We passed a temporary budget at our reorganization meeting in January so that we could keep the borough operating and so we could provide the vital services to our residents. It may seem odd to vote on a budget four months into the year, but there is a good reason. We do it this way so that our newly elected officials, um, Councilwoman Rachel Erlich can be involved in the finances of the town right away. Rachel has been on council for a few months and Councilwoman Deb Cohen has been on the council for a little over a year. Both have offered great insights and comments. I'm very proud of them and I think that Madison is good, is in good hands in the coming years. This is my last budget. I have had the privilege of serving the residents and voting on over a dozen budgets. I think the borough is in very good financial position. Fortunately, we had an adequate surplus, which we will allow us, which will allow us to help our residents and weather the economic pressure caused by the coronavirus pandemic. We have spent over $30 million in capital improvements over the last five years. I'm especially proud of all the improvements we have made to our water and electric utilities over the past five years, but we aren't stopping. This budget includes over $6 million in capital improvements, including a $1 million towards upgrading the water meters to a fully automated system. Right, John? It is the end of April, almost one-third of the year is gone and it's time to vote on this budget. So our department heads know what they have to and so, have to do, and so we can get on with the business of serving our residents. I think we have an excellent budget, so I'm encouraging all the members of the council to support it and to vote yes. And thank you for all of your insight. Thank you for all the conversation. Uh, thank you for all of the suggestions that were made over the last months. And again, I say a special thank you to the mayor, to Ray Cody, uh, to Jim Burnett and, uh, for all the hard work that they've done for this town. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much and very well said. The only thing I'll dispute is I, I think you voted on more than a dozen budgets. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask for a recount on that one, but, uh, Jim, if you could do a, uh, a little summary on the budget.
Mayor, I'm gonna do a very quick presentation if I'm capable here of sharing my screen. Let's see, bear with me here, I apologize, working on it now. Where is it? Here we go. Okay. Real quickly, Mayor, I'm gonna, um, go through a presentation here. Uh, let's see if I can do this. I apologize. So, uh, we're here at the budget hearing. This is the budget schedule that Councilman Vitale referenced. And, uh, as you can see, we've had a multitude of meetings and there are actually more meetings than are listed on here that we've had, uh, during, uh, the time from December to now. Um, numerous budget highlights, I'm not gonna go over all of them, just want to let residents know that they can visit this or any of the other presentations on RoseNet. The important ones are the first ones, the COVID-19 related expenses that was added into this budget. This allows us, if we have to go out and buy special equipment to be able to open up Borough Hall or to be able to operate, uh, in this new environment, it gives us the ability to do that without having to, uh, go through any special. Uh, we waived interest on certain utility and tax balances. We expanded the electric rebate for furloughed residents and for retail businesses. We continue to have the $2 million electric dividend and there's no changes in service to residents and just a 1% manageable increase. What's that?
You were kind of cutting in and out. You, you all some side of the whole lot better. Yeah.
I'm gonna try to get closer, Mayor, okay?
All right.
So, um, and, uh, we have a 1% increase, uh, in municipal taxes, which is a reasonable amount. These are the schedules that we've discussed. The only reason I have included them here is just in case there are any specific questions that we can, uh, I can pull them up. Uh, as you know, there are, uh, a lot of, there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty going on right now with the amount of revenues that we're going to receive. How quickly will the economy start back up? And so we have projected five years of surplus in two scenarios, the hopeful scenario and, and then the less hopeful scenario. We will see what happens, but in the less hopeful scenario, if you look at the very bottom on the right, you'll see surplus going from 9.7 million in the three major accounts to 3 million. That is a significant up in surplus. We need to manage this and monitor this to be able to maintain our AAA and be able to maintain our, uh, financial flexibility. Municipal property taxes over the last six years, not including this year, have gone up just by 3.1%. If we add this year, it'll be 4.1%. That's compared to over 20% for the county and I believe the school board's gonna come in, um, at an effective rate of 1.7% approximately. So that'll be about 16% for the schools, over 20% for the county and just 4.1% increase for the municipality. I think we've done a tremendous job over the last seven years managing, uh, the increase of municipal taxes. A quick update since March 30th, since the last council meeting, electric utility sales are down significantly, approximately 8%. True University is closed and, uh, the majority of the larger corporations that we have are obviously not operating at full capacity. They're almost nearly shut. That equates to a loss of revenue of approximately 150,000 a month. Um, and annualized, that will be 1.8 million over the entire, over an entire year. We don't anticipate that, but if that were to happen, it'll be 1.8 million. We received 82 merchant electric rebate applications. That's up to $400 per business. Those applications are still available and, uh, are, are still available and will be until the end of June. We've received 65 electric rebate applications for furloughed residents and that's up to $200. And as we've mentioned before, we'll continue to mention, uh, over the coming weeks and months, we will monitor all of our revenues, monitor the tax collection and update council on all that is going on. And with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and, uh, Mayor Valerie Dolan, our auditor is available. If you'd like to call her up, uh, to, uh, make a few comments for, on the budget.
So Valerie, you're there, we'll bring you up.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sometimes I gotta scream a little out of my computer. Um, yeah, we've been through the budget, obviously. We were here for introduction. We have been keeping an eye on and all of the issues that have been coming up that have been questioned about COVID-19 and all of the other, the shortfalls in revenue that were possibly, that should be, will be seen. And our advice has always, has been for most, for our clients is to continue with your budget, to go forward, put through the hearing, do your adoption. It gives you your ability to spend. It gives you your ability to do capital. And then like, once your budget is adopted, it becomes your plan. It's not, you then get the ability to spend carefully while monitoring your revenue. That's the reality of where we're at this year so that you can make sure that obviously you're not spending more than we're bringing in in the current year. And real issue that most people are facing is going to be a cash flow issue. And so that those two things go hand in hand with these budgets as you're adopting them is to really monitor your revenues and control and watch your spending.
Thank you, Val. And so we will, uh, a few, I know you've got to go a little bit, but stay on just in case there's any.
In case any questions come on, I have some time.
And I'll, uh, I just, I'm gonna touch on a few comments and then we will, uh, open it up to the council. You know, I, I think the, uh, as Val, you pointed out and the, you know, the question came up from Pat Rowe about the timing. I think a, a lot of towns that are taking advantage of the extra time are ones that were not in the position of a borough of Madison with the, um, well, well-planned fiscal management that gave us the cushion. Or the, or the other ones, you know, for example, Hanover Township with, um, a, um, heavy reliance on hotel taxes. As I've lamented over the years, we, the only hotel we have is for dogs and you can't collect taxes from that. But at a time like this, we were not counting on that and so we are in a far better shape. You know, also there's been the discussion of, you know, what is the appropriate rate? And, um, and my colleagues know that I, you know, insisted that we, we look at the potential for a 0% to see if that was the right route to do. And I think where we settled that is the fact that yes, we're approving the budget for 2020, but it, it is with a view to the out, outlying years. We settled on this budget because 2021, 2022 and probably 2023 were all be challenging years. And by presenting this budget with the 1% and, um, you know, slight, we are drawing down on our, um, surpluses, but we are ready for the, the long run. And so I think it is a extremely fiscally responsible budget. So I congratulate all my, uh, colleagues, uh, both, uh, elected and, uh, the professionals for putting together such a strong budget. And I want to thank Pat Rowe. Maybe I might have misspoke on the open, open space tax. I think right now, uh, you know, sugar, uh, again, since we're looking at this for multiple years, this is not the time to do any changes. We rely on that open space tax that has made, helped keep the character of Madison and the needs are not disappearing. If there should be such pressure on the overall budget in coming years, we certainly need something to look at, but I would not advocate that, uh, now. And, um, I would hope that we would never have to do that so we can continue to preserve our historic and, uh, open space nature of our town. And with that, I will, uh, apply it down. Yes, Ostry.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I really appreciate Valerie, your comments. It is time to pass the budget to see what kind of revenues we're gonna get in. Um, I think it is a thoughtful budget. Um, we did, we had an incredible conversation about, you know, what is, um, what we're gonna do here. 1% tax increase, I think is the appropriate number. Uh, we still have the opportunity to make adjustments if, you know, COVID-19 places undue hardships on our community. We are so lucky to live in Madison because other towns are struggling and you're gonna see them raising, trying to raise taxes to cover their costs and they're not gonna be able to do so. Um, so I really want to thank Jim Burnett. I want to thank Carmella. I want to thank the whole team that put this together. Um, and Madison is in really great shape and I think we're continuing to keep it in great shape. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll, I'll go in, um, it's just, if everyone wants to comment, I'll go in, uh, order here. So, uh, Maureen, did you want to say?
Yeah, one of, I prepared remarks. One of the most important tasks for a borough council is to craft a municipal budget. Each year, the mayor and council balance the needs of the current year with an eye to maintaining services in the years to come. Following the strategic plan initiative, the council sets out a five-year roadmap for capital projects and so, ensuring that monies will be available as the need for capital improvements and investments arise. This measured approach has allowed us to substantially recover from a position when money for capital was not available. Every year brings with it new challenges. 2020 and the COVID-19 virus presented us with substantial new challenge. How to support our residents experiencing economic setbacks and businesses experiencing closures due to quarantine and social distancing. Because of prudent budgeting and a robust electric surplus, the budget being voted on tonight includes support for residents and businesses. Without the electric surplus, these rebate, these rebates, as well as much of the capital projects would not be going forward. This is a fiscally sound and compassionate budget. It reflects mass and sense of community while maintaining a sound financial footing both now and in the future. I will be voting in yes on the budget.
Thank you. John?
Everybody said so far, it's all been so, I agree with all of it. A couple of things, though. One, I think it's a really solid budget. There's no doubt in my mind. I've been more involved in this budget than in any other budget, primarily due to my colleagues on the council who have included me in conversations, have called me and talked to me about it and it's just been a fabulous experience. So I think it's a great budget. Certainly I thank Jim and Ray for doing it, but it's a great budget and, uh, it's something that we passed today. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Deb?
Um, so I also agree that it's a fiscally sound budget and I appreciate Jim's time on the budget, but the numerous conversations that I had with him where he tried to clarify things and explain things. The budget process was much simpler last year, um, in regards to this, so it was, it was helpful and, um, he spent countless hours with me and I know with others. Two things that I just want to say, I am voting for the budget hands down, but I just had two comments. One, on the electric dividend, I really think we need to revisit that in May, once we pass this, seeing if we can increase it. We talked about it in one of the budget meetings prior, um, to reach more residents, um, as a way to help with that. And then on the electric rebate, Jim, and I apologize, um, I didn't catch this earlier. She might not have an answer for me. You said there are 82 forms from businesses that have submitted, which 82 times 400 is 32,800. Do we know what the, if every business submitted a form, what that, how many that would be?
Sorry, Deb, yep. Uh, it'll be about, we think it's gonna be about 350 forms, um, that we would get in. We're not sure, but that's, that's, that's about the estimate. There may be businesses that are operating out there that we don't, you know, we don't code in a certain way in our utility, um, in our utility billing software, but 350 times 40,000, Deb, is, um, times 400, 350 times 400 is about $140,000. So, uh, and we had talked about having about $300,000 available in total for the businesses and the residential program. So it's available till June 30th. We'll monitor it. It's being, um, you know, some of these, uh, applications are, the business ones were mailed out directly to them, uh, to 350 businesses based on the coding and the utility system. The residential applications are being inserted in the, in their bills right now, this, over the next 20 days and the last 10 days. So we'll, we'll obviously have a much better answer as to how far that reaches, um, in, in about a month.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to just take a minute to thank all of my colleagues on the council, to thank you, Mayor Conley. Thank you, Jim Burnett and Ray Cody. This has been a real crash course in municipal budgeting for me as a new council member. I've learned so much from working with all of you. Um, I stand in awe of your collected wisdom and experience and I realize that I still have a lot to learn, but I've really got a newfound appreciation for both the, um, financial power and, uh, stability that our borough enjoys, as well as, to be honest, the risks to which we are exposed in terms of, um, you know, the ongoing affordable housing issue, which to this date is unresolved and we may have some risk and exposure there, financially speaking. We need to preserve a significant reserve for tax appeals as Jim has explained to us. We know that there will be tax appeals from our corporate, um, our, our, our businesses in town. And it makes me realize that we walk a fine line here between doing what we can to support our, our community, our residents and our businesses and also being prudent in planning for the months and years to come. And so I think this budget, uh, does a nice job of finding that balance and I, I'm very pleased to support the budget this year.
Thank you. Carmella, did you have any closing comments before we go to a vote?
No, I don't, but, um, I, I, I do.
No, I don't, but I, I do, I do want, you know, just sitting here and listening to the comments of my fellow council members. It goes to show how really transparent we've been in presenting this, how we've been able to answer questions, and how we came together. I think it's like one of the most important things that, that could happen to a group of people, elected officials, that we could come together, we could discuss, we can have discussions and not always agree with each other, but put all of it aside and finally decide what's the best thing to do for the residents of Madison. I'm very proud to sit on this council because that's exactly what happened with my fellow council members. We, we came to the conclusion that we needed to do what was important for Madison. And I, I think that it was an awesome, was an awesome couple of months. It was, we drove poor Jim crazy, but, you know, he survived all right. And, you know, we really appreciate him surviving because we really need him. But it was a good, good exercise. It was a good exercise issue, it was very interesting. So I'm pleased to say my first yes for this, this budget, absolutely.
Thank you. And again, thank everyone for their comments and hard work on this. Roll call vote, please.
You gotta, you have to have a motion first, don't you?
We did, we did.
We already did.
We already did.
That was before, yep.
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, and congratulations everyone on their hard work. Any communications or petitions?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we're now on to our first of our regular invitations for discussion. This is limited to our agenda item, which is the additional roadway milling overlay that there, in Ms. Byrne's report, there is a mention of the PSA NG agreement, so you'll be hearing about that. And then you can comment on any other resolutions. If you are, wanna comment on other topics, you have to wait until later in the meeting when that will occur. So this is only on the resolutions and the agenda item. And the resolutions that are party consent, and you can comment on. Resolution 126 is awarding contract to Midwest Construction to the amount of $782,990 for the 2020 road improvement program. This is funded through ordinance 1 and ordinance 2, 2020. Resolution 127, appointing Brian Castano to position a probationary firefighter effective April 27, 2020. And this is the replacement of Lieutenant EMT Brian Tappan, who is retiring in May 2020. Resolution 128, ratifying the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting Agenda Items from the Council April 21st meeting. This is approving the operating budget check registry for $102,987 and the general capital budget check registry for $37,000. Resolution 129 is authorizing special event permit to allow the use of public parking lot at 28 Walnut Street, the senior center by Rotary Club of Madison. They were distributing food for those in need during this crisis. Resolution 130 is authorizing cancellation of $239.65 in late fees and real estate property payment. And this is for property at 72 Main Street. Resolution 131 is a resolution appointing Commissioner to the North Jersey Municipal Employee Benefits Fund, and that's James E. Burnett, CFO, Assistant Business Administrator. And Resolution 132, resolution adjusting interest and penalties on delinquent utility accounts. We announce this as part of the toolkit for those that are finding, struggling these days, that we will not be charging interest. This is retroactive to March 13th, and the interest rates will return to the current rates on August 1st. And this is for balances of under $1,000. And just so you understand on how the calculation works, that if you exceed 1,000, it's, it is, sorry, I just was handing a note. If it's under the 1,000, or go over the 1,000, you get charged interest on the full amount. So please, one, use this dudiciously because the bill will come, come due. If, right now, make sure all council members are muted as we go into a public discussion. And if there's anyone wishing to comment, the same rules are in effect, that it's only on those items I just mentioned. If you're online, please raise your hand by clicking the hand. If you're on the phone, you'll be recognized by hitting star nine. And for security reasons, we will not recognize anyone listed as anonymous or with a call without a phone number identified. When you are recognized unmuted, you must first state your name and address before you start any comments, and failure to do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace period, and we'll stop it. For anyone wishing to comment on any of the resolutions, may now signify. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. The 2020 roadway milling overlay projects. Raymond, are you, or?
I can, I can take it, Mayor, yep. We had the opportunity to sit down with Public Service Electric and Gas. They had an obligation to pave certain roads that they had disturbed for installation of the electric utility infrastructure. When we met with them recently, they indicated that they weren't gonna be able to get to the, the work list of the streets, and a number of those streets are, are in or near school zones. In particular, Central Avenue School was gonna be impacted by the future paving of Walnut, The Heart, and Cedar. And the junior school was gonna be impacted by the potential future paving of Alexander Avenue. So we negotiated a, an agreement with Public Service to take that work off of their plate because they weren't aware of when they could get to that work, and probably was gonna be after September, and hopefully, school has started again by then, in session. So the purpose of this is on, later in the agenda, there'll be a funding ordinance, we'll advance the funds. We have a contractor currently in town that's starting on our, paving our parking lots that are currently empty, the commuter parking lots. If you're in the neighborhood of Kings Road, you'll see a lot of activity over the next couple of days. We'll be paving the big lot by the Public Safety Complex, the Prospect Speed Street commuter parking lot, the Ambulance Corps parking lot, and the Maple Avenue employee parking lot. And in addition, we'll be paving the streets in the vicinity of Central Avenue School and the junior school. And it's a benefit to the borough because we can control the timing when things are slow and school's not in session. We get a better result because we get curb-to-curb paving with a vendor that we select, and the pricing, we'll be reimbursing ourselves from Public Service at a rate higher than what our vendor cost is to the borough because we're buying that, purchasing that service through a co-op. So we think it's a great win-win for everybody, and you'll see a lot of work in town. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you for outlining that. And it's, as Ray said, this will get the work out of, out of the way with minimal disruption. And it also shows our fiscal position that we can advance the money and be paid otherwise later. Many towns would have to wait for PSA NG to show up and probably too late to not impact the schools. Any further discussion? Okay, this is ordinance 14 that is listed for introduction. And now we're moving on to ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
We'll keep doing that. The ordinance is scheduled for hearing, were entered by title and contest on first reading of the regular meeting of the council, held on March 9, 2020, and April 12, 2020. They were placed and filed according to law. The copies were made available to the general public without these statements.
All right, we, we've already had the hearing for ordinance 9, 2020, so I will ask for a motion to untable that ordinance and move it forward.
No moves, Mayor. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Earl?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 9-2020 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 13-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $675,000 from the Water Capital Utility Improvement Fund for main valve and hydrant replacement.
Mayor, I move ordinance 13-.
Okay, well, actually, hold on a second because this one, we're missing the section for hearing, so we need to open the, and close the hearing. But hold off on a second, we need to go back to ordinance 9, 2020, that we untabled it, and now we need to actually move the, and Austria is saying, yeah, you should have caught that.
Do it, but you cut me off.
All right.
Ordinance 9, 2020.
And I'll second.
And do we have any further council discussion outside of pointing the fact that I made a mistake?
It's okay, we don't make mistakes.
Roll call vote on the actual ordinance.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Earl? Yes.
And now I declare ordinance 6, or ordinance 9, 2020 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we are, we already read ordinance 13, 2020, and I hereby open the hearing for the ordinance of Borough of Madison appropriating $675,000 from the Water Utility Capital Improvement Fund for main valve and hydrant replacement. And when the public wishing to hear, be heard on this ordinance, please raise your hand or hit star nine. Seeing none, I close the hearing. Now, now we'll take the motion, Maureen.
Oh, sorry, I move ordinance 13-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Earl? Yes.
I declare ordinance 13-2020 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to invitation for discussion number two. This is when you may comment on any. Again, the same regulations are in place, that raise your hand or hit star nine. Please keep your comments to, try to keep them to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace period, cut you off at four. The first thing you must state is your name and address, and failure to do so may result in you being muted or disconnected. Anyone wishing to be heard, please raise your hand or hit star nine. Yep, Mr. Finelli, you are currently unmuted. Please state name and address and start your comments. You might have muted yourself. You should be able to speak now. You, you are listed as unmuted. I don't know whether you tested your microphone prior to logging into Zoom. I'll give you a couple of seconds here to see if it'll work. Sorry, it doesn't seem to be working right now. What you can do is send a, an email to the clerk, and that will be entered in as a correspondence to the council and be recognized in the next council meeting. Do we have anyone else wishing to be heard? I hereby close this part of the meeting and move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for first reading, has a hearing date set for May 11, 2020. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 14, 2020 for first reading, and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for additional 2020 milling and overlay projects.
Mayor, I move ordinance 14-2020.
You're, you're muted there, John. Just for the record, I saw you say second, but.
Second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Earl? Yes.
Thank you. Now we move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by the certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 126-2020 to Resolution 132-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion, or any of that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Earl? Yes.
And there is no unfinished business, the approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher registry?
For the current fund, $3,894,584.34. General Capital Fund, $18,135.17. The Electric Operating Fund, $586,785.85. The Electric Capital Fund, $15,778.96. The Water Operating Fund, $19,802.5. And for the trust, $15,807.37. The total is $4,550,145.67.
Mayor, I move the vouchers.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yeah.
Ms. Earl? Yes.
There is no new business. Ms. Earl?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? All right, and all be, be home and be well. Take care.
Thank you.